I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 27th, 2020, and the time is 7 o'clock PM. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive for residents to stay at home, and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being conducted via video teleconference in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D.021. In addition, the school board has determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member or their superintendent to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular location. The district did make accommodations for public comment, which I will outline when we get to that point in the agenda. So I'd like to welcome board members, administrators, and those who are observing the meeting via our live stream broadcast. Procedurally, we'll conduct the meeting using the same format as we did in our April 13th board meeting. But as a refresher, I will again outline the procedures for tonight's meeting. We will begin by taking board members attendance by roll call. Anita Ozzy will call the name of each board member in alphabetical order by last name. When your name is called, respond by saying "present." Let's begin then with Anita conducting roll call attendance for board members. Anita?
Present. Anita, your mic is off.
I'll start over. Branniac.
Present.
Gerwitz.
Present.
Hardy.
Present.
Iverson.
Present.
Pritchard.
Here.
Quinell.
Present.
Stratmon.
I see Noel is here. Noel, your microphone was muted, so just verify you can say something here.
Hello?
You got you, Noel. Good.
Is it muted yet?
Now you're good.
Good. I didn't change anything. I've just been moving my lips up to this point.
Excellent. Thank you. Also present at the video teleconference meeting this evening are Dr. Hillman Superintendent, Anita Ozzy, Dr. Hillman's Administrative Assistant, Val Murdistorf, District Director of Finance, and Erin Bailey, the District's Director of Community Education. We will, again, as I said, conduct the meeting with the same format as our last meeting. Board members are asked to mute their microphone when they are not speaking. During the course of a meeting, when a motion or a second is required, Dr. Hillman will initiate the unmute for all board members. The screen will display the agenda item being discussed. At the start of each discussion, as chair, I will call on each board member in alphabetical order by last name for any questions or comments. If you don't wish to speak, you are welcome to pass. I will conduct one round of questioning for board members. If board members have a follow-up question or comment, consider using the raise hand feature in order to be recognized by the chair. All votes on items for individual action will be conducted by roll call vote by Anita Ozzy. Each board member should wait their name until their name is called before voting. Finally, this meeting is being both livestreamed and recorded, and access to the recording will be posted to the district website as soon as possible. So with that, let's move ahead. Dr. Hillman, there were some personnel items and one item for information in the table file.
That is correct. We just have a handful of personnel items that were added to the table file, and then the one information item is just a notification about a question-and-answer session for school board members and superintendents with the Minnesota School Boards Association this Wednesday. It's an opportunity for board members to engage with their statewide association about all things school board during this surreal set of circumstances.
Okay, excellent. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We will have a roll call vote for approval of the motion. Anita?
Branniac.
Aye.
Gerwitz.
Aye.
Hardy.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Quinell.
Aye.
Stratmon.
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries. The next on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for residents, property and business owners, parents, employees, and employees, and students of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we have made available on the district's website the ability for public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 PM today. All submissions that followed the district policy regarding public comment would be read by the board chair at this time. There were no public comments submitted for this board meeting. So we can move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
We have no formal announcements or recognitions this evening. I do want to, however, encourage board members to watch the school district's social media sites. We are sharing some very impressive and some fun things, video and other sources about things that are happening during distance learning. And one that was posted today, I would really encourage board members to go to the social media Facebook sites and watch, was a video that was put together in honor of Arts à la Carte, which is a beloved event that would have been on Friday night this past week. And what happened is Catherine Norrie, our honors art teacher, put together a video of the senior honors art students' work, and Northfield High School math teacher, and of course musician extraordinaire Ray Cudray played a special John Prine song that accompanied the slideshow. So I encourage you to go to the school district's Facebook page and check out about that four-minute video. That's emblematic of a number of the other kinds of things that we've been sharing to the school district's social media sites during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything anyone would like to add? I will pause for any board member who would like to add anything at this point. Okay. So we will move on now for items for discussion and report. Our first item for discussion is the COVID-19 distance learning update and district operations. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, thank you for the chance to give you an update here this evening. And I had provided you with an update in the packet. I want to go through a handful of those items this evening, and then I do have a couple of visuals that Hope Langston put together late this afternoon just to show you visually some of the items I'm going to share with you. So as you know, we started distance learning back in late March. Here in Northfield, it was on March 31st that we began that journey. We had May 30th as a teacher workday. And as you are well aware now, last week Governor Walz announced that we would continue to go with distance learning through the remainder of this academic year. So as we look into the second phase of distance learning, May 1st and May 4th, so this Friday and this Monday, the governor declared that there would be no distance learning instructions, so no new distance learning activities or assignments, so that school staff could have an opportunity to prepare and train for this extended period of distance learning that was originally scheduled to end on May 4th. And so this Friday and Monday, our teachers will have time to prep. They will also be engaged in webinar and other kinds of trainings. The Minnesota Department of Education is providing some training for us to be able to share with our staff, and our own district staff are preparing training sessions that people can either do live or where they can do those asynchronously, watching a recorded video and practicing their skills. So we are prepared to complete the year using the distance learning strategy, and which this makes all more important, our analysis of our survey data. And so what I want to share with you is that we did complete a parent survey and a staff survey, a teacher survey. We also had had a survey of early childhood staff, a survey of educational assistance that is just finishing. And in cooperation with the District Youth Council, I know we at least have one District Youth Council member observing this board meeting as an attendee, watching the livestream. In collaboration between our Director of Assessment Services, Hope Langston, and our District Youth Council, they have a student survey that finishes, it completed this afternoon. And so we'll be laying all of those surveys side by side as we move forward to see what are the intersections and what can we learn from all of those different surveys to chart a course forward that will improve upon the early success that we've had. I want to talk a little bit tonight about the parent survey and about the staff survey, excuse me, the teacher survey. First, I was thrilled that we had 1,582 parent survey responses and 266 teacher survey responses. Of our parent survey responses, we had 54 submissions in Spanish, which is by far the most Spanish submissions that we've ever had to a district survey. We were thrilled with the collaboration that we had with a number of community partners to get that level of participation, and of course, the survey was translated into Spanish for people to take the survey in their native language. So the district, as I said, the DYC launched theirs last week, and it's closing today. But as we get to the part about the parent survey results, what I want to share with you is that I'm going to give you an updated, I'm going to do a sharing of a different... We did do the update because when I sent out the item to you on Thursday, we didn't have all of the Spanish language responses into the system yet. So these are updated, and I wanted to share with you, just to make sure I get the right one here.
I think you had it there.
Yeah, no, that was a different one here. I'm going to make sure I get the parent one. Yep, so here we go. This is the parent survey. And when we look at the parent survey, what you'll see is that we had, as I said, 1528, 1582, excuse me, participants. And what we're going to look at is the... And you can see here the division between each building in terms of the people who participated, the parents at those sites. And then I want to share with you these four ratings. So when we look at this first one, this is the parents' rating of their communications from their children's teachers, and this is district-wide. And so, you know, you will see that we had 80% of families ranking that as excellent or good. And you'll see the poor, which is the smallest group, all of these areas, less than 10% of respondents rated any of these four questions as below average or poor. So we see the vast majority of people in the excellent or good category. So 80% of the respondents said that the communication from their child's teachers was excellent or good. When we take a look at the communication from the district, we see that 90% of families, or 90% of folks who participated in the survey said that the district's communication was excellent or good, with 57% saying it was excellent. Something that's really important all the time, but especially in a distance learning environment, are how do people look at the expectations that they are seeing in terms of the assignments? And we were in the high 70%, so 77% of the responses rated clear expectation for completion of assignments as excellent or good. And the final indicator I wanted to share with you tonight was the quality of the activities and assignments. And again, what you can see here is 76% of the overall respondents said that the quality of the activities and assignments was excellent or good. And so when we think about all of those across the system, to have that high of a result after the first two weeks of distance learning, we felt that that showed a real positive trajectory from a parent's perspective. Then we asked across the district, when we look at homework, or we look at the amount of time that a child spent on schoolwork last week, what you're going to see is that we asked them three different indicators. One was about the right amount of time, which 2/3, about 66% of the respondents, felt that it was about the right amount of time. And then you see the remainder of it fairly split, with 15% of the people saying we had spent too much, given too much work, or students were spending too much time, and 19% saying that there was not enough time spent on schoolwork. And when we further break this down, when we look at the information from families at the elementary level, at the elementary level, there was a higher amount of individuals who felt that we were about the right amount. That was around 70% of staff feeling that it was right about the right amount of work, and 20% of them feeling it was too much. Now, at the secondary, a little bit of a different story, where 63% of the respondents felt that it was about the right amount, and 27% indicating that it wasn't enough. And so these are indicators that we are really curious about based upon our experience with e-learning last winter, where we had a lot of feedback that we had expected far too much from students on a day where they were doing their schoolwork from home. So having district-wide approximately 2/3 of the people feeling that we were in that sweet spot, that we were providing the right amount of work, we feel is a very good place to be right now. And as we look at the secondary and the elementary, there are some things that we're looking based upon that parent feedback to make some minor modifications to address the individuals who felt it was either too much at the elementary level and/or that it was not quite enough at the secondary level. And that one at the secondary level is a little bit more tricky to unpack because you could quickly go from not having enough assigned to too much assigned very quickly with students having multiple classes. So we are considering a number of different ways to address that. As I said, the student survey ended this afternoon, and we asked the same question of middle school and high school students. And while that data has not all been crunched yet, Director of Assessment Services, Hope Langston, wanted me to give you this spoiler alert in which she was telling, she told me that the data shows that our students feel they are spending too much time on schoolwork. So that's a very interesting split, where we have some parents, especially at the secondary level, where we've also surveyed the students, with more than a quarter of parents feeling that we aren't assigning enough, and yet we have the majority of students saying that we're, I'm not going to say the majority, at least the plurality of students who are saying that we are providing too much work for them. So these are things that we are all, we are looking at, we're doing some additional work. We'll be unpacking that information with the District Youth Council from the student survey. We'll be overlaying it with both the parent survey and the staff survey. Now I want to share a little bit with you about the staff survey. I'm going to share this screen here so that you can see this as well. So when we look at the staff survey and we look at the response counts, and when I hit that, it just takes a second for it to refresh, so thanks for your patience. So you'll see that we had 266 teachers participate in this teacher survey. That's around 85% response rate. We were very pleased with that. I want to share with you, to begin with, those same ratings basically that we asked the, very close to the same ratings that we asked the parents. So this is one that really warms my heart. It's probably my favorite statistic in this survey, which teachers ranked the question about their experience with assistance from their peers and staff at 93% either excellent or good. And so what that really is showing us is that people have really pulled together, and they're doing a great job of helping each other with the kinds of things that they are struggling with. And again, you'll see a very small amount of below average and average in that rating. When we take a look at the rating about parent communication, this is their communication with the parents. You're going to see that staff are not quite completely satisfied with how the communications with parents has gone. We see a higher percentage of people in the average range, still trending positive, with 63% of people either rating it as excellent or good. And again, less than 10% rating it as either below average or poor. When we take a look at how people looked at the district communication, we see 86% of district teachers rating the district communication as either excellent or good. The next was 9% with it being about average. And then the final one, something we've been really interested in. You take a group of people who have solely worked with children in a school for years, and all of a sudden, we ask them to start working from home. We were very concerned about people's work-life balance, and especially for those staff who have their own children at home. And so this is a really interesting piece of our survey that looks at how these rank. And so we still see people who are in the about 13% in the excellent range, 35% in the good, 31% in the average. We do have 14% below average, and 7% of people who felt that their work-life balance was poor at that point after two weeks. And of course, if anybody who has ever made a shift, or those of you who have also made the shift to working from home, this is a pretty big shift for a lot of people. And you'll see as we look at teacher adjustment, even though we don't feel we have the work-life balance split quite there, what we're going to see is that we had 94% of our staff members say that they've made the adjustment. This says, "Which is the following best describes your personal efficacy with remote teaching at this time?" And you'll see 45% of the people at the time said they had adjusted, and 49% had said that they had adjusted with some difficulty. Now, this is fairly impressive, and I'm going to show you another graph that we just got this afternoon. See it late this afternoon. I'm going to show you this, though, too, about feelings. As I described this in the narrative, you'll see that the large... So this is a representation. The larger the bubble, the more people clicked that as a potential response. So you'll see that the largest number of people indicated they felt supported. You see also people feeling confident and competent, those next two items. But then, once you get past those first three that were all positives, the next three are ones that are not so positive, and 116 people saying they were overwhelmed, 65 people saying they felt lonely, and 59, not percent, but 65 people, and 59 people indicating that they were anxious. So we do have this, and as I've shared this data with our staff in a webinar last week, of course, this is the way, we are all beginners again. No one has ever done remote teaching like this before. And when you're a beginner, you have that mix of feeling very excited about that new task in front of you, while at the same time, there are the questions that you have, am I doing this right? Am I, is this the exact way I'm supposed to? I can't just walk across the hall, you know, to ask a veteran person to say, is this the way it's supposed to go? Because everybody is at the same stage. So we think that this is a fairly normal pattern, and we expected to see that split. Now, we did do something this afternoon where we did a comparison of our ratings to ratings from a group called the National Center for Public Education. And so we adopted a number of our questions based upon this national group. And what you'll see is the National Center for Public Education's teacher survey had an end. They had 7,254 people participate. We're comparing ours to our 266 folks versus the 7,200 in the National Teacher Survey, which we're not a part of. What I want to show you is that we're really trending well compared to this national group survey. So we see that our teachers, on average, are working longer than those in the National Teacher Survey. And we know our people have really worked extremely hard to get the ratings that I think you're seeing here. People have really worked hard to become proficient at this very quickly. But when we ask that question about which of the following best describes your personal efficacy with remote teaching, you'll see where we had 45% people in the adjusted category. The national survey showed 19%. Adjusted, but with some difficulty, 49% and 50%, about the same. So you're really seeing that we have many more people who adjusted than struggling to adjust compared to the national average on this one survey. And Mrs. Langston shares with me that this is the survey that a number of national publications have been reporting on recently. And then you'll also see how Northfield stacks up against the nation in terms of how people describe the adjustment of the majority of our students. And you'll see that we are, while we still have a smaller percentage of very good to excellent, it's still substantially better than the national results. And you'll also see that our good rating is 30 percentage points higher than the national results. And so we think that when we can take a look at something that's a more nationwide survey, that gives us more context for the data. The final graph I just want to show you briefly here is a graph that shows about food service. And this just blows me away. So if you see this graph that I now have on the screen as it refreshes, you're going to see that back on March 18th, when we started our food service, you'll see how it has grown each week. Last week, for the first time, we topped 10,000 meals, 10,000 meals that we provided for students last week. And we saw today an even higher day. Friday was our highest day that we've had yet, and today was even higher than Friday. So this is really important data, because as you know, I believe in the work of Abraham Maslow, who talks about making sure that we take care of people's most basic needs first before we are able to take care of their learning needs. And I just cannot compliment Stephanie Strumey and her team enough for the hard work that they've done to really provide. They don't know, we don't make people tell us that they're coming, right? So this is pretty impressive what they have pulled off. And then I want to share with you, too, the emergency childcare that, you know, we're required to provide by the state. Last week was our, we had some of our highest numbers last week. We averaged 58 students a day, but with a range of 51 students on the lowest day to 67 students on the highest day. And so you have this split. That's 16 kid difference in that childcare site is a really big difference in that. So that's the report for you tonight on looking at how we have done so far with the surveys of our teachers and of our parents. We'll give you a report on our student survey next. We're using those to monitor our plan as we move forward. We shared with you some information about the food service and about the childcare, emergency childcare center. And then the one last update that I want to provide is that we know that, once the governor announced last week that we were not coming back to physical school buildings, we know many people's questions turn to traditional spring events and specifically commencement. And we know that lots of schools across the nation are having this discussion, not just high schools, but obviously colleges as well. How do we honor our seniors? And if you've been in town, you've seen the lawn signs that have been put up. Those were privately purchased to recognize our seniors by having their home have a lawn sign indicating that they have a senior living there. We also know some parents are going to be putting up some banners around town fairly quickly to honoring the class of 2020. High school principal Joel Lear and his team had been doing some regular work on what graduation might look like. Once we got the final word that we were out of school for the rest of the year in terms of attending the physical school sites, Joel is working with a number of different people this week to finalize a couple of different plans because we still know that between now and the time that graduation happens, there could be additional changes with the pandemic. And so by May 5th, we will be announcing what the district's approach to graduations. We've had a flurry of ideas, some real creativity that have come in, and Joel is going to be working with getting some more formal feedback from parents and from students and with staff. And then, of course, our administrators will take all of that, and they will make a decision to move forward with our commencement ceremony. So that is my report this evening on COVID-19 and all of the updates. I'd be happy to stand for any questions that people have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hillman. I'll just remind board members that we'll conduct rounds of questioning or comments. I will do that alphabetical order, and if you just, if you don't have a question or comment, and you are certainly welcome to pass. So Tom Branniac, question or comment?
Yeah, a couple comments. Having a couple kids in school, I checked that they weren't getting enough homework. Of course, my kids felt otherwise. I did have to contact one of the teachers, and I did that by email. She got back to me within the hour, and she took care of what I contacted her for within an hour. So they've been real responsive, and actually, my kids haven't had nothing but positive things to say. So I did hear about one Greenville teacher who, on top of her 50 to 60-hour hours that she works a week, now has to pack. On top of that, you know, and all the teachers do, so are they feeling more stressed at Greenville? Is there a little extra help or anything over there?
Yeah, great question. I was going to share that as part of the construction update, Tom. But, you know, one of the things that, when the governor said we were not coming back to physical school buildings, we had been planning for weeks to be able to execute that packing as quickly as we can. As you know, the renovation of the current Greenville Park Building, now called the Northfield Community Education Center, well, it will be after July 1st. We know that's the tightest timeline for construction that we have of all the district projects. And we were very pleased to hear that the contractors had indicated that they were going to be able to accelerate that process. So we've developed a packing strategy that is, basically keeps it to about 20 people or less in the building per day. What happens is there's a cycle, and people, of course, with appropriate social distancing, we're asking them to verify that they don't have a temperature of 100.4 or higher, that they do not have any shortness of breath, or that they have a cough or a worsening of a cough, again, using that basic screening tool from the Centers for Disease Control. They are able to come into their room one day at a time, so we offer them a day, and then they go back into the distance learning classroom. And then another group of people comes in, and we have that rotation set for the next ten days. So the intent is that, no matter when we were to pack, between now and the end of the year, there would be some stress associated with that. What we've tried to do is we've made it during the regular workday. We relieve them from their live teaching responsibilities. We do ask that they are providing some activities for students to be able to complete on their own. Parents do have a, are able to call or contact the office. And if there's, they have a question on the work from a teacher who's packing that day, the people in the office are connecting them with someone else who, who can assist them. And we do have some other limited people onsite who can, who can assist. So in certain circumstances, depending on the childcare rotation and their other assigned duties, some educational assistance we've offered for them to be able to come in rather than supporting distance learning that day, to be able to come in and help. We have our office staff, we have our custodial folks. So we have other people who can assist, and frankly, we have a variety of ways that people would like help. We have some people who want no help. They don't want anybody else in their space, because they want to make sure that they can pack it in the way that they feel it is appropriate. We also, there are some people who may want that kind of assistance, but just don't want to have that many people in one space at one time, perfectly appropriate. So yes, Tom, do I think it's adding to the plate? I can't, there's no way I could look anyone in the eye and say, oh, no, it's fine. I mean, it is, it is, it is, and as someone, Tom, who I know understands about moving a large facility fairly quickly, what we think of this is that we, we do think that this does this in an orderly way that's done during the regular day, that relieves them from some of their distance learning responsibilities, not all of it. They are still preparing some assignments. But in order, this is no matter when we would have done this, even if we would have had students in the building. I've now done this, this will be our, my fourth construction project in my career that included a renovation, and I will tell you, packing has never been fun. And it always adds some stress, because there's, it's usually associated with a pretty tight timeframe.
Yep.
I want to compliment Principal Sam Richardson, I think, did an excellent job getting feedback from his building leadership team to talk about how, you know, how should we do the rotations? And, you know, really getting some quality feedback. So I really applaud Sam and that team for coming up with what seems like to be the most reasonable plan. And then, of course, the reward for this is it will give, it looks like it's going to give our contractors about an additional month to complete that renovation, which is a pretty important thing, as we all know, because that was the tightest timeframe that we had.
Well, let's move up the schedule of getting into the new Greenville building, such that the teachers will have more time at the front end of the next school year to unpack and get settled on?
So remember, there's two different pieces. We're talking, right now, we're talking about the renovation. So the construction, the, at the new Greenville Park continues unabated. And so right now, they are still on track, which we would, are scheduled to take control of that building on August first, or right around then. And so as long as that continues, we'd be thrilled. We will see, there's a lot of unknowns right now. We've got, most of the things that we know for that building are on time, and they are in the pipe to be scheduled or to be delivered. But as you, as you know, there are things that we can't control right now, and some of that part is, we, we do know the one thing that we're worried about is that the whiteboard factory, the factory that creates the whiteboard, produces the whiteboards, they have shut down for a period of time. So that is the one piece of equipment that I know that we're a little bit worried about, but we would be able to make that work.
That's great. Thank you.
Great. Amy, question or comment?
Yes, I have several questions, comments. The first is, with the high school students' response to the survey about there being too much work, I think it's in their best interest to respond in that manner. So of course, they're not going to want more work. So maybe take that response with a grain of salt, or do some checking beyond just what the survey says. I'm wondering if you plan to repeat the survey at regular intervals to see if the answers change over time, or what's your thoughts about that survey?
Yeah, so I, I do think that we will do a follow-up portion of the survey. I think the key part is that we have about one month left. You know, if you really look at, you really think about, we're about five weeks left. And so therefore, if we were to do a, it takes some time to actually unpack the survey results. So what I think would be most likely to happen, Amy, is that we would probably survey at the end of the year now, about, you know, with about a month to go. Because if we were to get the survey results, you know, with two weeks to go in the school year, we wouldn't have enough time to really make any further changes based upon that. So I think we'd like to have, you know, the full result of the, of the survey. And, and that brings one other item that, if I can just use this time, that I want to mention, just for board members to think about. And I want to be really clear that this is just a concept that several superintendents have been discussing, in that as we look toward the end of this school year, several school districts are discussing the concept of asking their board to adjust their calendar to end distance learning earlier than the end of the traditional school year. So just by way of example, let's say that you were to look to end the school year on May twenty-ninth with one, what would have been one week remaining left in the school year. There's some thought that, even though there are lots of positive things that are going well with distance learning, and we see a lot of good results, we also know there's some struggles, and we don't hide behind that. We also know that the public and parents are fairly stressed as well, and thinking if we had a definitive ending point for distance learning slightly earlier than what the end of the traditional academic year would have been, that that may be a positive thing to look at as we move forward. And if we were to bring that recommendation to you, which I'm still getting some information and thinking through this, so I want to be really clear, I'm not making a recommendation. I'm just giving you the, some, some thoughts that we have been discussing amongst superintendents in the region. It wouldn't be like people would not work what would have been that final week of school. With the uncertainty about what the summer and the fall entails, we'd use that week, just a conceptual way, to take a couple of days to really break down this experience and say, if we were to start it again, what would we do differently? When we come back face-to-face and in person, there are things that we learned in this distance learning environment that we could not have learned in any other way. How do we ensure that those things continue? And take the opportunity that we have for this reset, if you will, to improve our face-to-face instruction. We would be looking at potential conferencing with parents, you know, things like that. So again, I'm not making a recommendation tonight at all. It wasn't even included in the report. But this was a good time to, as part of your question, Amy, just to talk about it, and the fact that we do think that there could be, there's, there's some reasonable argument both ways in terms of, you know, to continue distance learning to what would be, been the end of the traditional regular academic year. Or there's also a number of fair arguments to come back to you in May and say, hey, we really think it'd be beneficial for us to end formal instruction in the distance learning environment on May twenty-ninth, for example. That people are talking about a number of different potential end dates in different districts based upon their circumstances. And so I just, I share that with you as a possibility of another reason that it'd be difficult to survey one more time. If we're going to do it, we need to do it at the end of the year, so that we could use those results to do any kind of planning that we might be doing for coming down the line.
Okay. Thank you. I have another thing as well. I'm, I'm really glad that you're looking at interesting ways of recognizing our seniors and the end of the school year. I know that's probably a lot of disappointment out there. Being a senior is something people look forward to from the time they're in first grade, probably. So many, many years of excitement to build up to a big question mark right now. So I'm excited to hear what your staff, the high school staff comes up with, the ways of recognizing the seniors and making their senior year different, but still special, and something that they will be happy with. So. And along similar lines, I wanted to thank you and all the administration and all the staff, teachers, for all the hard work that they've been doing to get us through this unprecedented time and figure out all these questions. And I just think you excel at crisis management personally, and I think it, there's a your strong leadership affects all of the people who work with you, and they, they are inspired by you to also be strong leaders all the way down the line. So thank you for all that you're doing for us during this time.
It's our pleasure, and we really have a great team, everyone. When we think about, you know, the work that our educational assistants are doing, helping manage the Emergency Child Care Center. When you think about the work that our custodians are doing to get ahead of cleaning and making sure that the buildings are disinfected, and all of the teachers and other educational assistants who are supporting staff, or supporting kids and parents at home. And then, you know, our, our six-person technology staff, you know, who really put us in a position to make this. It's really been a team effort. And again, we appreciate all of the board member support as well. We couldn't do it if we did not have support from you. So we're, it's a team coming together. Thank you, Amy.
Excellent. Rob?
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. First one is about the meal pickups. Just wondering if there's someone there, or how you police the social distancing while people are standing in line waiting to get meals, if that's done effectively?
Yes, so there's a couple of different things, Rob. There are some people who will just, most people actually just drive up in their car, and our staff walk, they say how many they want. They say, I'll have two, and our staff walk it out and hand it to them. Secondly, I happen to be at Greenville Park today for the food distribution, and they have cones on the sidewalk that if you're walking up where one person stands, and there's a cone where the next person stands. So very similar that if you go to the post office here in Northfield, there are some red dots on the floor in the post office indicating where you should be. That is how they're handling the social distancing portion, Rob.
Great. And then I was just wondering about whether you see attendance or engagement staying steady or, or dropping off? Because there've been things like in the Star Tribune about people just kind of giving up on it.
So I think that we, we have an attendance dashboard that updates itself. It's a pretty amazing, it pulls all of our information from Skyward, and it puts it into graphical format. I, I did not look at it today. So we were, and what, what I want to tell you is more so about, rather than talking about the specific attendance, I will tell you at the elementary level, we actually have had better attendance than we do on in-person days. It's amazing. And I had a chance to sit in on a second-grade Zoom meeting last week. Delightful, and really, really fun. The work at the secondary is much different. And so what we know is that we are specifically having meetings every week. Who has not engaged this week? Who's going to reach out to that student? Let's find out what the issue is, so we can try to assist them with that. But we do have more than, more students than we would like, who we are having to put on those lists to check in with. I don't, I don't have the specific up-to-date data for you right now, Rob. We were relatively satisfied the first week. We thought, okay, as we're still getting people up and going. But now we want to wait and see if some of these efforts are paying off. We are concerned about a chunk of students, and we are looking right now at near mid-quarter grades. And we are, again, have a dashboard where we're looking at those grades in real time. We have some concerns about those right now, and we are looking at a grading approach at, at the middle school where it's a credit, no credit, so we've, the letter grades are not an issue there. After surveying staff and talking with a number of different people, the high school had determined to go with a hybrid approach where you would get a traditional letter grade, and if you earned an A or a B, you maintained that. So that's what would go on your report card or transcript. If you got a C or a D, it would go on your, as a pass, right? With the note that this was the semester that COVID nineteen hit. And then with a no credit, you know, being the last option. We are at a point where we want to make sure all the data are in grade books before we actually make any meaning of that data. While we have a lot of students who are doing very well, we also know that there are some students who are struggling, and they, from, we are looking at the data of who those students are, and they do tend to be along the free-introduced lunch line. And if we look at, we have got a hundred percent of our families connected to the internet through a variety of different resources. We're providing food, and we're providing food and internet connectivity. And so now the next part is, what are the other barriers that are in the way of people from being successful? We look at this as an opportunity for us to really learn what are some things that we can help students with. Because now, the barriers that are there now are ones that have always been there. This has just illuminated them, so that we can really see them. So the, the answer to your question is, is not definitive at this point, Rob, because there's a difference between showing up and then also engaging. And those are two things that are different, that we're trying to find the wisdom of, of, to us, the engagement is more important than just the attendance. And, and how we measure that engagement, is it through completions of assignments? Is it through your test scores? Is it through, is it through simply engaging with your teacher in, in other ways? So that is a part that we're studying right now, and I hope to have a better answer for you on May eleventh.
Thanks.
Okay, Ellen?
I just had one comment. In response to Dr. Hillman's talking about possibilities towards the end of the school year of what the end of the school year might look like. And I wanted to just say that I think it's really important to take the time to have those reflections in real time, and we may not know exactly what the start of the school year really will be, but we had, it's amazing what the district has done on a very short timeline of having to do all that you've done. And so I think being able to take stock and reflect and have that interaction with families or parents in, in some way seems really valuable. So I just, I, I appreciate you sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, a couple of brief comments. First of all, I think that Amy mentioned it, but I was really thinking about that, is, you know, I don't think pity's the answer, but I really want to lift up, and I want to celebrate our seniors, because this is a tough year. And I just want to say, what can we do as a, you know, our, all of our four thousand students are very important, but this, you know, some of these, these seniors kind of feel cheated, but we, you know, we need to lift that up. We need to get beyond this. We need to say, hey, I, I see kids around town or whatever, and I know, you know, what year are you? And I said, well, you're, you know, we want to get you to that graduation, and we want you to celebrate your, your twenty-twenty. So I'm just wondering, you know, how do we do that? And kind of an, I don't know, interesting comparison. I'm on two cemetery boards. One is a small one out by Lonsdale, the other one is the big one here in town. And I, I talked to the old mortician, and I said, well, how's business? And he said, well, actually, really slow. And I said, well, that's, that's great news. But, and I said, you know, I mean, I pay a lot of attention to what they're doing for funerals and people around grave sites, and it's, it's the CDC thing. And ten is ten, nobody, no more than ten. And I'm just wondering if we, you know, whether, I don't know where prom is at, I don't know where we're at with that. But I think that sometimes to help people to get together in no more than ten, to, you know, wear the mask, do the social distancing and all of that, how can we facilitate something more on that line, that we're helping these kids get together or whatever they're doing? And I'm wondering, is, is prom done? Is, is there anything going on with that? And then, again, you know, what is commencement really looking like? And I think if we can't celebrate these things now, you know, let's work on some dates for postponement, you know, when things clear. So we will get over this Corona season. It's going to go on for a while. It's something we're just going to have to live with. But we have to be, you know, positive and optimistic, but let's, in the next five weeks, let's for sure honor our seniors and see what we can do to lift them up.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments, Jeff, because the class of twenty-twenty, you know, is obviously very special. And they, unlike any other graduating, everyone remembers when you graduated. Everyone will remember the class of twenty-twenty, right? And you, we will all remember how we felt at this time. You know, unfortunately, when we listen to how Governor Walz is talking about the gradual coming back together in our society, the gradual opening up, we, we, we will not have a prom this year. It just, it's that we aren't going to be able to open it up in that way. We just, we know that that's not possible. We know an in-person graduation is not possible. I, I, there, there's just no, I, it would not be responsible of me at all to try to hold out hope that we could be able to do a traditional graduation. There's just, I see no scenario that allows us to have that happen. When you think about that happening on May thirty-first is what the scheduled date would have been. So very difficult in terms of that now. But setting that aside, we think about those traditional pieces. I couldn't agree more with you, Jeff, about lifting up, you know, the class of twenty-twenty. What I want to share with you is that there have been a number of creative ideas around how we can honor that class. I will also tell you that I cannot in good faith make a recommendation to postpone graduation or delay it. I think that what I worry about doing with that is that if we try to push it off a month or two months, there's no guarantee the situation's going to be any better, and it could potentially be worse in a month or two months. And now we have people hovering rescheduled grandma and grandpa to come. So I believe when you are faced with a situation like this, you have to face the brutal facts first, right? And so we face those facts, and those are just not options right now, in, in my opinion. I want to get people's hopes up. Now, there are some very creative ways that they're looking at commencement. I don't want to get into them right now, because there's a lot of different ideas. I think the high school administrative team has some really good options. And then in addition, what I will share is I think there is some option to do some of the things that you're suggesting, Jeff. But in a little bit- But in a little bit of a different way. So Jeff, I know you're, you know, really big into our alumni and, and celebrating those milestone graduations. You know, we don't hold any kind of reunion for a class until at least year five, right? And there could be the possibility of us looking at hosting a class of 2020 reunion as soon as it is safe to do so. So while we may not be able to have people in person on graduation, it's possible we could host, you know, a reunion next summer. Maybe it's this winter that we could do something. We will not forget the class of 2020. We will make sure that they are honored in a very special way. They will be honored in a way that no other class before has been honored. And frankly, in a way that we hope no class in the future has to be honored again. But we will make sure that they get their moment in the sun. We will make sure that what we come up with is both celebratory and yet safe. Rice County has a, is our infection rate is fairly good right now. We want to keep it that way. It's because people are doing what they're supposed to do. So we have to be a leader in that. But I think there's some other creative ways that even without a traditional graduation ceremony where we could get the class of 2020 back together in some other way as we move forward. So Jeff, I want to assure you that's top of mind for our high school administrators. They know how critical graduation is and how special they want to make it. They've got some creative ideas. We've had, we've had a lot of interesting ideas shared with us. I'll just say, people really thinking creatively.
Well, thank you for that. And I think an early, you know, alumni party or celebration for the class of 2020 is an excellent idea and the date will work itself out. And all those kids, you know, 300-ish, which we're usually with a class, they're all connected by, you know, phones and they know dates and stuff. And I think that that's, you just have to remember that and look forward and, you know, celebrate that. We know the long list of the things we can't do, but there's nothing more powerful than the power of imagination and you got a great staff and come up with some really great ideas to keep honoring those kids as they move forward towards completing their senior year.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Noel, questions or comments?
Yeah, a couple of them. This class was delivered lemons and I think they're going to make lemonade out of it with 2020 vision.
Very good, Noel.
One of the things Dr. Hillman, you said earlier in the survey was that the students felt they were, they were responsible for more homework. Not sure exactly how the, the sentence was stated.
Yes, that's correct. That they're, the feeling that they were assigned too much, Noel, that's what Mrs. Langston told me from the early review of the survey.
You know, we came without asking the students directly, but I'm wondering if the students are, are making a distinction between homework and the time they spend on the screen.
Very well could be, Noel. We're still digging into that data. That one just closed this afternoon, but Mrs. Langston really wanted me to share that with people tonight, that there was this interesting thing of how parents looked at how much work had been assigned versus how much the students felt they had been assigned.
I want to say one other thing. My high school graduation, and this, this happened in May. Our little town in western Minnesota flooded. And so the senior class was still in, filling sandbags. And there are a lot of pictures of the senior class, all, well, let's see, there were 46 of us filling sandbags. And that's part of our senior picture and our senior memories. Sandbags to, to handle the flood.
Thanks, Noel.
Okay. Thank you for everyone's questions and comments. You know, echo, I certainly echo what, what board members are saying. It's just really tremendous survey results. And you and I have had the discussion, Dr. Hillman, that, you know, while this was all put together in a relatively, obviously relatively short time to develop the distance learning plan, you know, the district has done a phenomenal job of building the educational tools and the infrastructure and learning from the e-learning days last year that were, that really set us up for success and meeting the challenges of this. And I just applaud, as Amy had stated as well, your leadership and your vision and just the, the way in which you approached, approached it and establishing the guiding principles and the framework around that that helped people to see the vision for success. So we are just incredibly humbled to, to see these survey results and to, to understand and appreciate the, the work and the effort and our amazing, talented and dedicated staff, top to bottom. Really great.
Thank you, Julie.
Then one other housekeeping note, we would, as you teed up, the potential of, of ending the school year a week earlier or so without having a specific date, we would make that final decision at our May 11th board meeting. It would be an item for individual action.
Yes, I, like I said, we've not formulated a final, a formal record, whether to recommend it or not yet. However, because of the timing of, if we were to make a recommendation to end the school year, end the academic year, I should say, not the staff work year a little bit early, normally, you know, we bring that kind of proposal to you at one meeting and then ask you to vote on it at the next meeting. Unfortunately, in this circumstance, we'd have to bring it to you on May 11th and have to ask you to make a decision that evening because obviously we wouldn't be able to bring it, you know, on May 11th and then have you come back just after Memorial Day when that would be rolled out in the next week. So if we, like I said, we're still doing a lot of internal discussion. It is some feedback that has come through from some parents asking us to investigate that, from some staff asking us to investigate that. And then as well, as I said, it's been a topic of a number of superintendent discussions, not just across the state, you know, but across the nation about, you know, what's the best way to bring this to some closure at the end of the year. But we wouldn't, if, if we were to bring it forward, we would have to ask you to not only hear the recommendation, but also vote on it in the same night, which you know is unusual in how we do business. But just to tee that up, should you, should we decide to make that recommendation would be solely with the May 11th board meeting.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next item for discussion, which is the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, affectionately known as SEVSEC. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, just want to make a couple of comments here this evening. First, I'm sad to share with you that Executive Director of SEVSEC, Lynn Kriminga, who also was our Assistant Director of Special Education here for a while in Northfield and went back to being a, a special education teacher at Northfield Middle School when she first came here. She has resigned as Executive Director of the Cooperative. She's going to be the new Director of Special Services for the Little Falls Public Schools. And we're so excited for her and for her family. We know that they have wanted to move further north for a bit. And so what a great opportunity for Lynn. She did an excellent job helping get the cooperative off the ground and getting systems in place and really creating a program for four different school districts out of nothing. And so we're so proud of the work that SEVSEC has done for the special education students who need a more specialized program than what we're able to offer within our own regular education settings or our own educational settings at Northfield, Fairbo, Oatana and Medford. So the process for seeking a new executive director is already underway. The, either the posting was to go up today or it'll be going up tomorrow. We are working on getting interview dates and trying to get that SEVSEC board. Of course, Amy Gerwitz is our representative on the SEVSEC board right now. Rob was our previous representative. So we want to thank Lynn publicly for the work that she has done and we wish her and her family luck in their next chapter of life. And one of the other things that Lynn has been working on that she is going to be handing off to the new executive director and the superintendents from the cooperative are assisting with this right now is, as you know, right now, we have students in three different locations at Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative. We have some students and the students with unique, new programs here at Laura Baker School in Northfield. We have some, we have them in two locations, actually. Some students, well, three, at the Alexander Learning Academy, which is the former program between Fairbo and Northfield. But again, that's housed in Fairbo. And then we also have the STEP program, which is for students from 18 to 21 years old. And that's at the former district office in, in Fairbo. And we have an opportunity to, not this coming year, but the following year, at least quite a bit of space at the Fairbo West Mall. It's the former mall where there was the J.C. Penney and those areas there. And so we've been looking at what would taking over a bunch of that mall space look like? There'd be some real operational advantages by bringing all three of the programs into one facility. Obviously, you'd be able to be more efficient with staffing. You'd be able to be more efficient with a number of other things that you all know from an operational perspective. What I want you to know is we just did get some numbers last week, late last week about what would it be should we were to, to move into that area? The, our lease would be about 100,000, just under $100,000 more per year than it is now. And we did have Ellers run the tax impact for that across all four districts. And I'm just going to give you a couple of examples. So a residential homestead of $250,000 estimated market value, that would be an increase from pay 2021 to pay 22 of $7. For a commercial industrial property that was rated at estimated market value of a half a million dollars, that would be a $29 dollar increase per year. And so as you can see, as you can hear, I mean, again, we just got these numbers last week. Val has already started to do just a little bit of cash flow analysis of this. However, what we know is that even though our, our levy portion would go up by that about $100,000 a year, again, $7 for a home at $250,000 estimated market value, the operational savings would eclipse that. We know that there's a substantial amount of operational savings that of course the districts all end up splitting anyway. So there is some trade-off on this and having everyone in the one location would be very good. So I'm just giving you the heads up tonight about these initial numbers. I will bring something more formal to you for the May 11th meeting. And then I will ask you to approve or to, to consider at the May 26th meeting, authorizing SEVSEC to enter into that lease agreement. So that's just a heads up so that you know what's coming here. Val, did you have anything you wanted to share on your financial analysis?
No, I think you covered it. The rest is pretty in the weeds.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go through board members again. Any questions or comments on the SEVSEC update? Tom?
No comments.
Okay. Amy?
No comments.
Rob?
I have no comments.
Ellen?
No comments.
Jeff?
No comment.
Noel?
No comment.
Okay, excellent. I had one question to clarification. Dr. Hillman, when you said 100,000 for the new lease agreement, is that in total or Northfield share?
That is Northfield share.
Okay, okay, excellent. That lease levy continues to just prove itself to be really an important tool for us to do this kind of work. And I just appreciate the continued diligence we have for making sure that SEVSEC is, is really been beneficial for students educationally and, and how it's working for us financially. We, of course, hear time and time again about the special education field and the shortage of, of teachers and administrators. I imagine we're hopeful for a pool. Any, any sort of thoughts around the pool of applicants we might get for this really important position?
Yes, as we've talked with superintendents to our network, we do feel that there will be a number of qualified candidates for the position. We think that it's well situated comparatively in terms of how it stacks up against other similar kinds of entities, other education districts and other cooperatives. So while it's a smaller cooperative than many others, the position is a pretty competitively paid position. And we feel we will get a good crop of candidates.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our next item for discussion, which is the storm water maintenance agreement for Greenville Park Elementary. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and I just want, I'm not asking anyone to approve this tonight, but what I am sharing with you is a document that I will need to ask you to move on at the next meeting. And really, this is around the new Greenville Park Elementary School. And what you have is a standard agreement, really for any new construction. And it's formally outlined, we, we will have a storm water retention pond on this site. And so what this agreement does, and it's been worked out between our Architects and Engineering Partners, WOLD, and the City of Northfield. What this agreement will do is it will formally outline our responsibility as owners to maintain the onsite storm water sediment pond. And to also outline that these things are in effect so that our site does not have an adverse effect on the creek that runs behind the building nor on the storm sewer in the area. And really outlines specifically, what are the owner's responsibilities? What are the things that the city would be able to do should the owner not fulfill its responsibilities? Of course, you know, we will fulfill our responsibilities. This is a very standard agreement when you're having a construction project of this size. And we've had our legal teams look at this with, from WOLD and, and again, WOLD does this fairly frequently. They've worked with the City of Northfield over the past couple of months to get it right. And so I just wanted you to have it now. We're not asking you to approve anything. Now we're asking you to do that at the next meeting. So this is really a first reading of this.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I will again run through board members for any questions or comments. Tom?
Um, yeah. So is that a, a pond, pond that will continuously hold water? Or just a depression in the ground that in case there's excess rain, that it could hold water? And if it is something that continuously holds water, would it need to be fenced in or anything, given the age of the, the children in that area?
Yes, so I am, Val, can you help remind, remind me on this? I don't believe that it is enough where it has to have a fence.
Um, I believe that it will have a fence.
The one in the back, not the one in the front, correct?
Right, the, the retention pond in the back. I think it will continuously have water and have a fence around it.
That, that is correct. Just from our playground work, the one in the back does, will have a fence around it all the time. And it will continuously have water.
All right. And I guess I wonder, would there be any way to take advantage of that as a place for science, nature, science possibility? I mean, if it, if it's fenced in, it'll be difficult, but if it's, if it's not, you know, if there's frogs, whatever, living in it, that perhaps the science teachers can take advantage of that, I guess.
Yeah, we've not discussed that to this point, Tom, but certainly would always consider things for scientific advancement.
Thanks.
Amy?
So I have a couple of questions. One is, is the pond connected to the creek at all? Or are they different water bodies?
I do not believe, it is not connected to the creek.
So it won't drain out the creek? It won't drain through the creek and, or any of that? It's just completely separate?
All, all of the water in that part of the, on that property, and Noel, you know that property very well. A lot of it does naturally flow into the creek. So the idea of the sediment pond is that as that water is collected, it is filtered before it goes into any of the other bodies of, into that body of water. And it also then will slow the rate in which the water enters the creek.
So some of the water does feed out of it into the creek?
It will go through, my understanding is that, that the way that the sediment pond works is that it is, allows it, it allows the water to filter into whatever the next, its next stage is more slowly than before. So some of it could end up through groundwater and dying up into the storm sewer. Some of it could end up in the creek as it continues through the regular process of, of filtering through and, and ending up where water ends up. So my understanding is it could end up in both places.
So the, all right, so the water is filtering mostly down?
Correct.
Into the ground, okay. So I had similar questions to Tom's and they're kind of opposing thoughts, but the first is making sure it's safe because it is so close to the schools. And I know the fence is important, but I, I just want to encourage people to think through that carefully because, you know, elementary students have no problem climbing a lot of chain link fences and things. So thinking of how to keep that area safe so we don't have anybody hurt. But at the same time, the opposing thought is, I love the idea of making it accessible for the, some science teaching. Because there's a lot could be going on there with wetlands or whatever, some interesting plantings, some interesting wildlife, maybe. So just to keep that in mind while planning the fencing, that it should have some gates and some accessibilities or somehow see if WOLD can come up with how that could possibly be done.
I think there's also some code around that as well, Amy.
So, so you have an attractive nuisance on the one hand and a teaching possibility on the other and some code to figure out in the middle. So if you could look, look at that and see what you could figure out. And then the other question is always things like mosquitoes, you know? Is it going to be, is it going to attract mosquitoes and other bugs and become a health issue as well?
I, I don't know the answer to that, Amy. I know that there's our mosquito. I know that there's our mosquito control districts. I don't know if this one is one of those. So I don't have an answer on, on the mosquito issue.
And along a similar vein, I'd be cautious about using pesticides to kill off the mosquitoes. Cause then you have yet another problem that you're introducing. So I have a lot of questions and I, I understand we need the storm water system, so I get that. But I just hope people are considering all these other questions as you're putting together the plan for the storm water system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, questions or comments?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, Ellen?
No comments.
Jeff?
No comments.
And Noel?
Uh, I have a little bit of a follow up description. The purpose of the, of the pond is for two purposes. If we had a significant rainfall, we've got about five acres of roof in Greenville area and parking lot. And if it all discharged into the creek, we'd have a serious problem. We'd have flooding issues. So the purpose of the pond is to collect the overflow as best it can. And allowing it to meter out into the creek. Secondly, I believe the, there are two pipes discharging from the pond into the creek. One of them is to get the natural flow of the water and the other one is to pretty much drain the pond so that there is no water in it. And I'm not sure of that second one, but I believe that was what part of the intent was. And then of course, it's a settling pond for a lot of the, um, I don't want to say debris, cause that's the wrong choice of words, but the, the sediment that's, that accumulates on a parking lot. And it flows down into that pond and then on a regular basis, the pond will have to be cleared out. And, uh, reestablished to its normal level so that it can be worked as a, both a settling pond and an overflow pond. Does that make sense?
Yes, Noel, it does. And I, I agree that that's the purpose of the, there's been a lot of thought process into the, how the roofing system works with the parking lot, with all of the other parts to get water to go where you want it to go, so it doesn't overwhelm the systems.
If, my add, if we didn't have a, a system like that, I think the creek would have water in it a lot. And then that would be a different issue. So this tries to concentrate the issue into one area, into one part of our facility.
Thanks Noel.
Okay, thank you.
I see Tom has raised his hand.
Oh, excellent, thank you for noticing that. Tom?
Um, yeah, uh, to, I think, sort of answer Amy's question about pesticides and whatnot. I think when I read through that, that were really restricted on what kind of chemicals can be used. And if there are any that are, they have to get the approval of the city. So, um, uh, my guess is that you can't just use any kind of pesticide or whatever. So I think in that regard, it, it could be safe.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll move on now to financial update. Director of Finance, Val Murdestorf, welcome, Val.
Thank you. So not a whole lot to report tonight, but as I had mentioned at the last meeting, um, I think it will be useful to just kind of give you a, a quick update about the different things that we're seeing and experiencing in relation to all of the COVID-19 changes. So really nothing major, um, from the state financially, other than the extension of distance learning, obviously. The, the big things that we've been doing since the last meeting is now that it's official, we are working through a lot of refunds. So we have refunded all field trips that were, um, scheduled to be in the spring. That's pretty much revenue neutral for the district because we didn't incur the cost of the field trip either. So that's, um, not, not a huge deal, just work to make sure we're getting people back the money that they're owed. We, we did make the decision to refund all spring activities. And so just a sense, we, we have refunded $31,094 in the last week to parents for activities. And I think that's still a work in progress as we kind of go through that piece. The other thing we're refunding is a portion of the high school parking permits. Certainly not required to do that, but as a good faith effort, knowing that they only got to use 75% of the parking permit. So we did reimburse or we're working to reimburse about 25% of that for families who had that. And that'll be about eight or $9,000 for the district. So those are kind of the big ones. The state did come out with some guidance slightly expanding the use of the fund balance transfers at the end of the year. Basically now it includes some, um, anything that we purchased for technology or the, the cleaning equipment and the pandemic supplies and those sorts of things. Were originally not on the list, so that was expanded slightly. And then they did come out actually today with some guidance on senior student activity funds. That doesn't have a huge impact on us because we don't have a, a senior specific student activity fund. We do have a junior class one that carries over from year to year and class to class that really supports prom. But not a senior specific one, so that shouldn't be a huge deal for our district. The other refund that we are working through is the choir trip that was canceled. That is a pretty significant one for families. We are waiting to get the money back from the travel agencies or from the airlines and those sorts of things. MDE did come out with guidance that we have to have all of those refunds finalized by June 30th. Obviously for our fiscal year end, I'm not 100% confident that we'll have everything settled with the travel company at that point. They've indicated six to eight weeks. And we're working with one of the airlines in particular to, um, they offered vouchers, which obviously aren't helpful for us. So we're working through that, but we will ensure that the families get refunded before June 30th to be in compliance with that. And I think those are all the, the major things that we've been working on since the last meeting. Otherwise we've continued with the payroll and done all of the things as requested by the state. So I would welcome any questions that you have about that.
Excellent, thanks, Val. Tom, any questions or comments?
No, no questions, comments.
Amy?
No comments.
Rob?
I was just curious about, kind of about the logistics of not all being in the office together. I mean, not for things like internal controls that areas having to have multiple people look at things. So I'm just wondering how you deal with just the logistics of finances.
Um, yeah, so we're, we're lucky in the regard with our finance system. It has some, um, electronic internal controls that we were already utilizing. So I can't post a journal entry without one of my staff reviewing it and that's all electronic. Same with our, you know, our time system is primarily electronic and really the stuff that was coming on paper has been really few and far between at this point. And even with those, we're actually, I've allowed staff to email their approval. And so then we're, my staff are printing the email that has their, you know, electronic approval basically. Deposits have obviously been extremely limited. Most of the buildings, um, really kind of saw this coming and made sure that they got everything out of their offices prior to the shutdown. So that was really taken care of for the most part. And the items that we've seen come in have been extremely, extremely limited. And we do still have our custodial staff working. And so the, the deposits that are coming in, my staff can come in one day a week. We have a rotating schedule. And so she's able to process that and then the custodian takes it to the bank to deposit. And so we're kind of making it work in different ways. Kind of depends on the topic, but for the most part, it's been, been okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ellen?
I just had a comment, I wanted to thank Val because you mentioned that, you know, at the start about the field trips and that's just a pass through and that, you know, it's cost neutral. And I would argue that, you know, I know that we run such a lean, you know, administration and your team. So none of it's really cost neutral because I know that, that all of the things that you and your team are doing. And so I just, I really appreciate the update and, and thank you. Thank you.
Jeff?
Yes, to piggyback on Ellen's comment, uh, thank you, Val. And, uh, sometimes you just need to get creative and be persistent with what we're doing. And it's a lot harder, you know, if we're not around people. So, uh, thanks for overcoming those situations and just keep moving forward. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Noel?
Thank you, Val, for all the work that you do to keep the district operational. I have one, uh, thought regarding trips. I've been reading in the travel section of the, of the trip that airlines are wanting to give vouchers back. Rather than return the money, they want to give a voucher. And there are people that are saying, wait a minute, this was a trip that I was planning to take and I don't ever plan to do it again because I'm too old to take another trip. I think the same might be true for high school trips. There may be a trip to France, but I don't believe they can do it a year later. So I wonder if there's some way to be able to negotiate contracts that don't have that clause in it that they can use a voucher for the future, that they need to return the money.
Yep, two, two out of the three airlines for sure are just doing cash refunds. And we've been very clear with, um, our travel agent that we worked with that vouchers really not acceptable. There's kids that are graduating and not going to be able to use it. And so, um, they're definitely working through it for us.
Yeah, good, thank you, Val.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Val, best of luck. We were here two weeks ago saying goodbye and, and wishing you all the best. So we, uh, we're confident that, that this is the last board meeting, we will see you. But I'm so, um, certainly echo all the, the wonderful comments board members shared with you regarding your amazing work. So we really thank you and your staff just doing an incredible amount of work, um, always. But in particular now scrambling under a number of really tight timelines now with June 30th and the refund situation and just the, the backroom work that that's going to require to make that happen. So thank you and your staff so much and all the best.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to policy committee recommendations. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and so you'll see in your packets that you have three policies that have come through the policy committee. It is our first reading. And so therefore I will, uh, open it up to any questions that people have. I do want to point out one thing that I know, uh, we had had a question about and related to the policy 414 about mandated reporting. And prior to the board meeting, I had a couple of people reach out just to say, hey, can we talk about the definition of child that is in the beginning of that policy? And specifically around how it looks like there's a gap when you see that in 3B, it talks about a child means a student under the age of 18 for the purposes of Minnesota statute 260C. Or a student who is under the age of 21, who is in foster care placement, uh, according to Minnesota statute 260C. I did talk to Terry Morrow from School Boards Association this afternoon just to review that. And of course, as soon as he said the answer is like, of course, that's the answer. Policy 415, uh, which is not the one we're reviewing now, actually covers the mandated reporting for vulnerable adults. So for those students that we have who might be 19 or 20 at our ALC or who are 18 to 21 in our STEP program, they're covered by policy 415. So I know that was one question that people had upfront. And then I also noticed that, um, we also had a situation in, uh, policy, the next one, after the child maltreatment reporting in, um, policy 419, the tobacco one, where you'll notice that we just accidentally copied the same definition twice under two A and B. So we'll clean that up for the next time too. But without those two pieces, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any feedback about these three policies that we're just, our policy committee just continues to roll along in terms of trying to make sure that we're hitting every policy every several years. So this is where we're at and, um, any questions or comments about these policies? Again, no action tonight.
Okay, so board members, I was thinking because we have three policies to deal with to try to facilitate the discussion in this format, what I would like to do is just address questions and comments individually per policy. So I would start with policy 414, which is the mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. I will run through board members asking for questions or comments specifically regarding policy 414. We'll move on and do that same round for policy 419 and then the last policy 421. So board members can just focus their comments and questions specifically now on policy 414. Tom, any questions or comments?
No comment.
Amy?
Uh, I was wondering about all of the definitions. Are they something that you created, um, in, within the district? Or are they taken from legal documents or, uh, model policies that the MSBA has put out? How did you find all of those?
Yes, this is the model policy as recommended by the State School Board Association. And it's updated based upon, uh, uh, changes in statute.
And I'm just curious in general, I, I think it's really important to have this policy. How often is this policy needed?
So I would, I, while it averages year to year, and I don't have the data in front of me, I would say that we most likely have about a half a dozen, at least a half a dozen of mandated reports per year.
And I'm fine with the content, thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Rob?
I have nothing.
Ellen?
No comments.
Jeff?
No comments.
And Noel?
No comment.
Okay, so let's move on to policy 419, which is addresses the possession and use of tobacco, tobacco related devices and electronic delivery devices. Again, policy 419, I will run through board members for questions or comments on policy 419. Tom?
No comment.
Amy?
No comment.
Rob?
No comment.
Ellen?
No comment.
Jeff?
No comment.
And Noel?
No comment.
Okay, I had one comment and Dr. Hillman, you and I talked about policy 419 at the dissemination of policy. The last, um, line where it talks about, um, notice, notice of this policy for new employee ori- orientations. And because we address students within this policy, um, there will be an addition regarding, um, the communication of this policy to students as well.
Correct, we will point this out in the student citizenship handbook in terms of directing it to this policy.
Okay, excellent. Let's move on to the last, um, policy 421. There was just a one addition under the last, uh, to clarify a definition. But we will run through board members for any questions or comments on policy 421, which is gifts to employees and school board members. Tom?
No comment.
Amy?
No comment.
Rob?
No comment.
Ellen?
No comment.
Jeff?
No comment.
And Noel?
No comment.
Okay, thank you again. These, um, these policies will be items for individual action at our, uh, May 11th board meeting. And thank you to the policy committee for your work. And I know it's continuing, uh, via teleconference. So thank you for all of your work. That does conclude our, uh, items for discussion and report. We can move on now to the consent agenda. As a reminder, uh, there were a number of personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent agenda, agenda. Is there anything anyone would like? Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? I will pause for any board members to respond. Okay, hearing no response, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
Don't move.
Moved by Amy. Is there a second?
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We will conduct a roll call vote. Anita?
Braniac?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on now to items for individual action. This is the resolution for termination and non-renewal of probationary licensed staff. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of the probationary licensed teachers list as presented at the close of the current 2019, 2020 full year?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second by Ellen.
Second by Ellen. Thank you. We will, I will run through if there are any questions or comments board members have regarding this motion. Tom?
No comment.
Amy?
Is this a motion about a specific person or is it a general motion?
There are eight individuals listed in the board packet, Amy, that it refers to all of those individuals.
Okay, I'm not sure I got that page. But that's fine. This is the standard one that we've done in the past?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Rob, any questions or comments?
No comments.
Ellen?
No comments.
Jeff?
No comments.
Noel?
No comment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anita, we will have the roll call vote.
Braniac?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Aye.
Excellent, motion carries. That is our only item for individual action this evening. So we will move on for to items for information. Construction update number 25. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and the construction update continues on as we have had the last couple of times that our construction process continues unabated at the sites where it is currently occurring. What you, what I did mention in the previous part of the agenda is that we are accelerating the process at both Greenville Park and soon to be Longfellow as well for the packing of the items in those buildings so that we are able to the Northfield Community Education Center, their current Greenville Park facility, that that renovation can get underway earlier. I do know that last week, as the weather got better, they have disabled the, at least part of the, the furnace or not the furnace, the boiler, excuse me, at that building so that they are working on that, starting to work on that HVAC overhaul already. They had planned to do that regardless of whether we had been out or not. Of course, it just makes it easier for them to work when students aren't there. So that is the silver lining of the remarkable circumstance that we're in is that we are able to probably get a month extra head start on the Northfield Community Education Center, which I know makes Director of Community Education Erin Bailey sleep a little bit better at night that we won't have such a tight timeframe. So we know that people have been unpacking. We know Sibley is getting ready to start packing and the area is affected as well. And if you've not driven by, it's amazing to see the exterior changes that are happening at both of those facilities. If you go by Sibley, you'll see that they do have the windows in the cafeteria or the, at least the window panes in really looking sharp. And I think that we're starting to see those visions take place. So we keep on keeping on, so to see, so to speak. And again, I encourage people who are watching to go to our school, this website, northfieldschools.org/construction. And they are able to see updates, including live webcams at Sibley and Greenville Park and some pretty cool flyovers and fly-throughs as well. So that is the construction update for this evening.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up now for board members' questions or comments. Tom?
No comments.
Amy?
No comment.
Rob?
I was just wondering what they were doing that they need to close Maple for a short time. You know, tapped it out.
That's a good question. I, I don't, I, I'm not even sure that that is necessarily related to our project. It might be, but I-
City that said that it was related to the Sibley renovation.
We will, we have a project oversight committee. Val, do you know what that's about? Do you have heard that one?
Okay.
Let me ask some information. I'm speculative, but I was in a meeting where we spent a fair amount of time looking at the east side of that building because the, the elevation or the contours are going to change a bit. And I think it has, by changing the contours, it may change the tree plannings and it's possible it may change some of the parking lot entrance and exits. Well, I don't know if that's the reason to close the street, but I do believe there's something going on regarding the entrance and exits to the parking lot.
And if you all, let's see, actually I do have the information, Rob, as I just remembered that I had gotten an email about this. And so it's actually being closed in part, Rob, for the, to hook up the sanitary sewer. That's what it is that needed right there. So I had gotten that message from Jim Call Seth that the purpose of the closure is to hook up the sanitary sewer. So Noel, I'm sorry, it's not exactly what you were, but we know, we at least know what the closure is for.
Great. Sanitary sewers usually go down the middle of the street. So that's a good reason to close the street.
Ellen?
No questions.
Jeff?
Yeah, I drove by there today. It looks great. That's a good looking building. I'm just wondering, is there any other major change orders or minor change orders we're be concerned about? Or is there any, for lack of a better expression, the functional, you know, obsolescence that we're forgetting about, but I'm sure we're kind of hopefully beyond, you know, most of that.
I'll have Val talk to the change order part. We've had limited change orders, actually.
Yeah, nothing major. That, that not recently. We had a couple with the new Greenville initially, but otherwise it's been really minor. Really minor items.
Great, yeah, good weather for building.
Okay. Noel, do you have any other questions or comments on construction update?
No, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to Dr. Hillman, National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes, we just want to share that next week, May 4th through the 8th is the official National Teacher Appreciation Week with the formal teacher appreciation day being on May 5th, 2020. And of course, we are grateful for all of our outstanding Northfield teachers all the time, but especially in this very unusual set of circumstances. And I think you see that the data from the parent survey really does show that our parents value this quick pivot that our teachers had to make to teaching in an online environment. So I encourage everyone, when you see teachers next week, or I suppose you're not going to see them, but think of them and, and just make sure that we elevate them. It's so important that teachers feel our support right now. And again, we mentioned that they're feeling like beginners again and all beginners need support. So I just encourage you to really, if you've got some folks who you know, to reach out to them and thank them for their work.
Okay, thank you. Our last item for information then, thank you to Anita for including in the table file, the question and answer session with MSBA for school board members, superintendents and administrative assistants. They are actually doing two sessions, 7:00 PM on Wednesday, April 29th. And then again, at noon on Thursday, April 30th. And if you go to the MSBA website, they right on their homepage is an area to click that will access you right into the, the question and answer. They are soliciting questions that board members have. So if any board members have any questions for those who will be on either MSBA or those who will be able to share on the on the meeting, we can submit those individually. Okay, so that is items for information. Future meetings, as we've discussed, Monday, May 11th at 7:00 PM is our next board meeting. We will proceed in having that meeting done via our video teleconference format that we have used for our April meetings. Additional meeting in May would be Tuesday, May 26th. And in June, Monday, June 8th, those are all at 7:00 PM. And as you recall, we did pass the resolution that we would have teleconference meetings until further notice. So we will make a decision about that last meeting in May and first meeting in June as we get closer to those dates. So thank you everyone for a great meeting with this format. You know, we just can't thank Dr. Hillman, district staff, administrators, Anita Ozzy for the truly outstanding work we're doing. And we just were confident that we will continue to rise to the challenges. Thank you, thanks to the dedicated and amazing people we have in our district. So and we will emerge stronger. So we look forward, of course, to a time when we can all be together again. But in the meantime, we want everyone to take care and stay well. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
And move with adjourn, Noel.
Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Anita, we will have a roll call vote.
Braniac?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned.